Okay, good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here this evening. This is our, well, it's our Thursday, September 23rd, 2021 regular board meeting, which we had to push for some reasons to tonight. But thank you just the same for joining us here this evening. What I'd like to do right now is I'd like to entertain a motion to open the meeting. Lucy Masakra, second. Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so the good news is that we're all been running with school. We're all been running with our athletics and our sports and wonderful tribute to our hometown heroes. At the school on Friday night, it was Heroes Night. There were a lot of people in attendance. It was a terrific football game and just a nice opportunity to really start to honor some of our local heroes. I know, it was a terrific night. We had a nice little pregame celebration. There was food donated by a lot of the local food companies and vendors and people that support Mahopac Central School District and Mahopac Sports. So overall, great day, great win for the Lads as well. So in any case, what I'd like to do right now is, we didn't have any comments on agenda items, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to go in and I'd like to get a motion to accept the July 2021 Treasurer's Report motion. Trustee Martin, second.
Second.
Trustee McDonough, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we'll move over to our warrants for July 2021. Motion to accept. Vice President Savino, second.
Second.
Second. Trustee Delula, all in favor?
Aye.
We have our revenue status report, July 2020. Can I get a motion to accept this, please? Trustee McDonough, second, please.
Second.
Second. Trustee Delula, all in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, our budget transfers for July 2021. A motion to accept, please? Vice President Savino, second.
Second.
Was Trustee Martin, all in favor?
Aye.
And without any further ado, I'd like to turn it over to our illustrious Superintendent Schools, Mr. Anthony DiCarlo.
Anthony. Thank you very much, President Monken. And I just want to echo your sentiments. What's really most important to understand is that these first couple of weeks of schools, it really is about looking into classrooms, seeing kids interacting, smiling, you know, hearing writing, reading taking place, listening to kindergartners come in and really enjoying sitting down and getting to know their teacher more. And I just want to thank the staff. What I mean by the staff, I mean teachers, administrators, custodians, secretaries, bus drivers, everybody that goes into making Mahopac Central School District a special place. And being able to have everybody in is something that we're all enjoying and liking. Couple of things that I think are really important to note where I left off last month. So indeed, I did reach out to Senator Harkman. We had the following conversation. I talked about the need for the state to really understand the impact that all these regulations are having on our students, our staffs moving forward. What I mean by regulations, I'm talking about the testing now that we're being asked to do. I'm talking about contact tracing and the amount of hours that our administrators are dealing with literally after school and on weekends. Suffice it to say that up to yesterday, since school started, and we do have the most in the area, I've spoken to other superintendents, we've had 40 positive cases, 30 which have been students, and 10 which have been staff members. What's interesting when you start to look at these numbers, they're actually more than they were last year at this time, yet we are not quarantining as many students because of some of the new regulations that deal with three feet of social distancing and of wearing the masks. With that being said, there are going to be ebbs and flows. There are going to be some weeks that are better than other weeks. That's just the way this pandemic is going. I can tell you, and I'm sure you're clearly aware of this, we have more and more of our employees who were vaccinated testing positive. And so that also is going to have an impact on times, on our classes and our availability for our teachers. So when we talk about testing all of our employees, and I said this to Senator Harkman, we've actually become hospitalless. We are becoming a hospital. And we are testing whether it's going to be our employees and screening later on with our students. And we're not getting into what we're supposed to be here, and that's about education. I also said to him, you know, you need to understand that you have to have conversations with some of the superintendents and start listening to parents as to what is happening. Because all we're doing is triaging every day. And we were putting up with a lot of stuff that, I don't know if you understand these regulations and the impact they're having on us. I'm not the governor, I'm not you, I'm not the Assembly, I'm not the Senate. But if we continue to do this, some of this stuff is going to be unsustainable. Just because by nature, if you start testing all of individuals that are employees and they start testing positive, they can't be in school. Because currently, the state of New York is not following the CDC guidance of being able to test out. It's got a major impact. Transportation. And I know you know this, because you're reading it almost every single day, and we are very, very limited to what we can and can't do because we're basically at our max with our transportation drivers. Literally, every day, we have the entire transportation garage driving. That's mechanics, that's dispatchers, because we have individuals who could be out ill. We have individuals who are out because they have COVID. And we are all trying our best to make sure we're getting our kids back and forth every day. So there are going to be continuing ups and downs as we have to go through some of these protocols. Now, as you know, or may not know, the governor's declaration was for 90 days, and then she's going to evaluate this after 90 days. So we're looking more or less towards the Thanksgiving time period. Again, I implore you, I continue to get emails, I continue to get and have discussions. Many of these regulations and many of these protocols that we are being asked to follow are not protocols that any of us, me and myself or this board, has put in place. As far as I'm concerned, we're starting to deal with an endemic. What I mean by endemic is that this is something that we're going to have to live with, and we're going to have to be able to work around. And I've implored and I've asked Senator Harkman to make sure that we have to really have the conversation about where we're at and what's going on. Because when you look at contact tracing and the rules we have to follow right now, pandemic and endemic are very different. Because if you're in an endemic like you are with the flu, sometimes if we get flu, and oh, by the way, in order to close schools, you have to have 20% of the population have the flu, but yet we don't with the pandemic and COVID. That's another discussion that I brought up. But with that being said, it needs to come a point, Tom, where we say if it is an endemic, okay, we send a notice out to let parents know in a given classroom that somebody tested positive, and just to make sure you keep an eye out on it, if your son or daughter is having those signs, go to the doctor and get what has to happen on testing. I get it, I'm listening, I'm hearing. I can't make those changes, but others above us can. So I share with you, I did have a lengthy conversation, as I promised I would, but again, I implore you, whether it's emails, talking about contact tracing and the fact that it's ridiculous, the hours that Mr. DiCarlo, your principals, your assistant principals, Mr. Tremway, Dr. Stogel, Mr. Bellu are spending doing this, it should be at the state level. Well, I brought that up, and the state has no idea the amount of work that we as educators actually do laying all this information. So when you get a phone call from the state contact tracer to say, oh, by the way, your name came up, we just want to make sure you follow through where you at, all that bad work is being done by our building principals, our assistant principals, these two gentlemen that are here in Troy, Delhi. It's unsustainable. Something needs to happen. And at the end of the day, we are hoping that, you know, the state is at least beginning to listen to what we have to say. With transportation, again, we're asking them to relax some of what the regulations are. There's no bus drivers out there. There's no bus drivers out there, okay? That's the reality of the matter. We try, we have, as you can see in the Mahopac News and all local papers, I'm working with the county, Mr. Penney, Mr. Tully, to try to get their message board, to try to put something across from the firehouse for people who are interested. But even if you're interested, the protocols to have to become a bus driver, even if you have your CDL, you ever take a 30-hour course that you have to pay for? You then have to go through a protocol, and we have to make sure you're fit to work with students. If you don't have an SDL, you now have to go get the SDL, and that we're talking about 12 weeks. So at the end of the day, we're trying our hardest to do what we can, and our priority, of course, is to get our kids back and forth to school. There are times and occasions, those of you who may be sports parents, when our kids have to wait to go to another game or go to another district because our students have to go home first. That's the priority. With that being said, as I've mentioned, you know, we always need that first week and a half to two weeks to adjust some of what happens with transportation. Suffice it to say, in my last conversations, the morning runs seem to be going much better. Kids are getting to school closer to time than they were the first week and a half to two weeks. We know the afternoon, we're getting better in some schools, other schools, you know, we're working harder once again. If you don't have a driver, we don't have enough drivers, sometimes we have to double up. In addition to that, since the first week of school, we've had the following happen. Two buses, mine and yours, bugged. A bus got hit by a car coming up another road. We had a Union Valley was closed last week because of an issue at the Willow Vine Club. Wires down on Crass Road after a storm. Truck hit a pole on East Lake Boulevard and Route 6. Trees and wires down on Route 6 and Juleau Road. Bus 387 broke down at Lakeview in the afternoon. So you compound, it's just the first week and a half of school, and then we have these incidents happen, yeah, buses are going to be late. What we're trying to make sure that we do, and again, as I've mentioned to you, there's only one person in transportation in the afternoon because everybody's out busing. We're trying to make sure we let you know as parents if the bus is going to be extraordinarily late, and we'll move forward from there and let you know so like some of that anxiety about not knowing where your son or daughter may be, at least you have an understanding about what the delay may happen and be. But again, transportation issue, I just can't make drivers appear. And I think many of us know if we rode buses when we were younger, most of our bus drivers were retired people, or retired, you know, police officers or firefighters or others. And I'm going back 55 years ago, I can tell you how old I am when I started school. And so what's happened is the pandemic. So a lot of these drivers now don't want to drive, and trying to recruit people to drive is very problematic. And then you just add the normal people who get sick or have family issues and have to go out, we're trying our hardest. So, and we will continue to do that. But there could be, and I want to be very honest with you, as we go through the school year, there may be days where we don't have enough drivers, and we may have to stagger arrivals or dismissals because we want to get kids in, but we may have to double up runs and other things that we have to do. So that's the reality of what we're dealing with. I know I've been long-winded with it, but it's important for everybody to understand what is happening with transportation and how I continue, and will try to continue to advocate for some of the issues and things that you are bringing up with regards to COVID and quarantining and contact tracing, because we all know that's got an impact on all of us as we move forward. With regards to quarantining and contact tracing, I know that Mr. Tremway, Mr. Bellu have been instrumental in contacting and letting parents know and then setting up those specific quarantine guidelines and then the appropriate work that is being sent home. We are listening and have listened to parents, but again, there are certain obligations that we have that are contractual. You know, the teachers have the right and first refusal to do some of this tutoring, so sometimes it takes 24 hours or more to be able to get teachers and then set that up. If for some reason that does happen, your son or daughter would be entitled to those hours, they came back into school and they would do another two to four hours, we would make sure they get that. We are also working on, and will be presenting to the Board of Education in the next week, the possibility of adding some instructional time during the day through iTutor, so that if your son or daughter winds up getting quarantined, they can go to iTutor where there's a certified teacher who can help them jumpstart some of their work during the school day and then connect with the teacher outside of the school day. So we're looking to upgrade some of that as we go through. Again, we're hoping we have less and less students, but I think, and I think we all know, that there'll be ebbs and flows as we go forward. Another issue that came up is outside is not inside. Outside is not inside. As Mike mentioned, and it's happening all over the Hudson Valley, we have athletics and events that have started, we have students at games, we have parents at games, we have bands at games, it's all outdoors. Masks do not have to be worn outdoors. Indoors is another situation unto itself. And I'm sure you will hear as we get into the winter sports, there'll be a little bit different protocols when we get inside and what that looks like with masking and what that looks like with social distancing as we go through. I know we have had and will continue to have our virtual nights for our back-to-school nights, the principals are reporting, we have many, many parents, more so than we've had in the last couple of years attending, because of the fact that it is virtual and there's so many other things going on. We are hoping that as this hopefully pandemic plateaus in elementary schools, when we have our parent-teacher conferences in December and then in March, that it'll be optional, that if you'd like to come in and meet with a teacher, you can. If you'd like to do it virtually, because it's easier to do it virtually, we'll be able to have that be done with regards to moving forward. I know there's a lot of events that are scheduled in the next number of weeks that center around harvest and Halloween. I know that the PTOs are working hard with the building principals to do these activities and be able to do them outside, because as we know, that's the best place to be able to do it as we move forward. It's really, really important to understand. As far as transportation goes, again, what has helped us out tremendously, and we are not seeing widespread quarantining on buses because of the wearing of the masks and only having to quarantine those individuals that may be directly within that six-week radius of a student that tests positive, so we're not seeing that. I also spoke to Mr. Bellu today, and we're also, because we have assigned seats for lunches, we have kids socially distanced appropriately, we are not seeing widespread students being quarantined for lunch, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school. So suffice it to say, again, I want to thank the public, that by continuing to do a lot of these mitigation strategies that we already had done last year and we continue to do, we are not, hopefully, we will not see widespread breakouts, that we have to close schools and the like. We're all working hard to try to make sure our students are staying in and getting instruction as much as we can, what we do realize, and whether we like it or not, this variant is very different than last year's COVID. Last year's COVID, the original COVID, was not affecting as many people as it is now. So we're continuing to work as hard as we can. Again, we know it's not easy. I know it's not easy. I think sometimes everybody thinks that, you know, I'm listening and I do happen to be deaf in one ear, I have a cochlear implant, but I do listen, and I am advocating, and I'm trying as hard as I can at the state level, as well as with my group, to start to advocate that this is just unsustainable. It's unsustainable. We need some help, we need some relief, we need people to understand what we're dealing with and what's happening, because the 90 days is going to fly by, and it's now, not at the 89th day or the 80th day, to bring this up. The time to bring it up is now. I did ask the senator if he would allow me to get before the Education Committee, that Senator Shelley Meyer chairs up in Albany. I would love to get up there and advocate and talk about a lot of the things that we're talking about, because I don't think everybody understands, it's easy to make rules in Washington, it's easy to make rules on the state level, but when you're impacting schools and educators and education and we become testing facilities, it's just not appropriate. It truly isn't appropriate. And I do understand that something needs to change, but I can't do it on my own, but collectively, hopefully, we can start to do something and our voices can be heard, because that's really the important piece of trying to change. Some of what we're trying to do. So I know it was a lengthy superintendent's report, but I think it was very, very important that I update everybody on where we're at with regards to some of these issues, some of which we're listening to, and we're going to make some modifications along the way, but other things, as I mentioned to you, with regards to transportation and some of these other issues that are regulations and quarantining, we just can't, it's not easy, we have to follow it. Because, you know, the state has said if we don't follow it, you're not in compliance, we can be fined $1,000 a day. So we have to make every effort to do what we need to do. Again, I thank you for listening, the Board of School Board, thank you again for all your support, you know, it's not been easy on you, it's been easy on anybody. So I thank you once again, and that will be you, President Monken.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. DiCarlo, for the very informative superintendent report, very helpful. So with regards to what Mr. DiCarlo was talking about, with regards to advocacy, what I'd like to do is we're going to talk just for a real brief minute on our ad hoc committee. The Board of Education is asking community members to please submit a letter of interest to our district clerk, Melody LaRocca, excuse me, at larocca@mahopac.org by September 30th. So what we did was we extended it a little bit longer, so you'll have until Thursday, but we're still looking, you know, we'd like to have a few more, we've had a nice response, but we'd like to have a few more respondents that want to serve on, as Mr. DiCarlo pointed out, you know, an advocacy committee that, you know, that will, you know, be a nice voice for the board and for this community. The ad hoc committee, the board and superintendent will be committed to monitoring that all and state education initiatives and will advocate for policies that are in the best interest of Mahopac Central School District. This may include developing and retaining a dialogue with legislators, as Mr. DiCarlo has been pointing out, to advocate for district policies as applicable, curriculum changes, testing, fiscal management. The board and superintendent will continue to participate in the NISBA, the NISWIS, and the Westchester Putnam School Board Association programs related to policy and advocacy. It's an important piece, it's an important committee, and I'm asking people that are here, people that you know that might want to serve on this committee, to please get their letter in. Trustee Ben Delula will be quarterbacking the ad hoc committee with, I'm sure, a lot of input from Trustee McCracken and the other board members that would be on that committee. I know that they've already chatted up a little bit. Ben, would you like to just speak on, please, if you wouldn't mind?
Just very briefly, so Trustee McCracken and myself just talked probably a week and a half ago, and we're sketching out the format of the meetings, and we're going to probably decide within the next few weeks whether we're going to be meeting monthly or bi-monthly, and then we'll have a kickoff meeting, I think, to the last two hours, and then we'll determine how many times we're going to be during the year. One thing that we decided was that it's going to be driven, the agenda will be driven by you guys, so the community will drive the agenda, so we'll listen to everybody, and as President Monken said, I'll set up the meeting, but we're going to listen to the public, and we'll take the cue from you, and with the talent that we have on the team, so Trustee McCracken, who has experience in the government, will be on that as well. I'm very excited about it because it's an opportunity to get direct input from the community, which I'm very excited about. So I do, I just echo President Monken's comments. If you're interested, it is a commitment, it is a time commitment, I know how challenging that is, but if you're interested, just give us a thought or think about it voluntarily. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Delula. Melody, we don't have to tell her anything, too. We have the vote, we have the help.
It is in a sense a challenge.
It is, okay, thank you very much for that. Okay, so we have, so can I have a motion right now to accept this evening's consent agenda? Can I get a motion? Lucy Masakra, trustee, senior trustee, Lucy Masakra, second.
Second.
Second. Trustee Martin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What we have on the, so what we have on the consent agenda is a board protocols, it's something that we've been working on, and, sorry. Okay, so what we've been working on is we've been working on board protocols, and my hope was that the, and our hope is, that this board protocol, this will serve as a kind of a blueprint for the school board and future school boards to work through with regards to how we communicate amongst each other, how we communicate with our superintendent of schools, and how we communicate with the community. So I'm excited about the board protocols, and so I just wanted to highlight, I just wanted to highlight some of the things that we've been, that we've adopted. So the Board of Education is expected to follow communications is obviously very, very important, so, you know, there is a chain of command, you know, you've seen it at the school level, right? You've seen it where, you know, we're encouraging people to, you know, instead of, you know, just to go to, follow, kind of follow the chain of command. So you go to your teacher, you go, you know, you go to an administrator, and then obviously you go to the superintendent. So we're trying to make sure that, you know, that we keep things at the school level, and then when it escalates, it gets to, you know, then it would obviously come to our superintendent of schools, Mr. DiCarlo. So that we had those types of questions, we have board agendas, and who's responsible for adopting those, that would be the board president and the superintendent of schools, they receive input from the assistant superintendents, the people that you have over there, and people right up here on the dais up over here. And then we go through board meetings, we go through just the presentations, what we mean by the committees as a whole, we're getting more information from our assistant superintendents in real time, rather than a committee that we meet, you know, three or four times a year. And then we have subcommittees that you'll see on for tonight, we have our policy, finance, audit, our HR, our safety, and our ad hoc advocacy. And then we have what, you know, what happens in executive sessions. So executive sessions have more base to them, there's more spirited dialogue, it's really encouraged for dialogue. So we have those types of things in order to create a really good executive session and something that's very prudent. And then we have what our expectations are from our superintendent, who is actually our chief executive officer, the expectations from what you should expect from your board president, that would be in the protocols as well. We talk about the relationship between the superintendent and the board president, and some of those things that can help foster relationships, head things off of the past, so to speak, and we have those in there as well. Again, this is a blueprint, I believe, for success. And that really kind of sums up the board protocols for this evening, and I thank everybody on the school board, in our superintendent of schools, in our assistant superintendents, in our district clerk, for helping to pave the way for what I think is a nice blueprint for success and moving us forward as a school district. So thank you, one and all. What I'd like to do right now is I'd like to turn it over to, we have our resident comments, now we've got community members that requested to speak to us this evening, it's something that is so near and dear to us, so I would like to, right now, I'd like to turn it over to our district clerk, Melody LaRocca, and Melody, would you please, please?
So Maggie Traeger.
I can't see without my glasses. Can I keep my glasses off after uploading? Because they just started following me now.
Go ahead.
My glasses. My glasses. Okay. I can move it further away. Thanks. Sorry. It's like fogging up with them all the time. So I, I might, the only way I can describe this is that I guess, I don't, I feel like I'm talking to the choir because I have to say, first of all, can you hear me?
Yes.
The, the board and the administrative staff have been very responsive to my questions since June, when I started really closely paying attention to what was happening. And, and I do have to say, I find it pretty sad when I watched last Tuesday night, the board working meeting, which I thought was phenomenal and everything you said, Mr. DiCarlo, was spot on. I found it sad that very few people watch it. They saw the amount of views. So I'm not on social media, so it's interesting because, you know, I have four children in the district and you hear people and they tell you things and, and I hear people screenshot stuff and they send me stuff on social media. And I'm here tonight, there's nobody here. But that's, I hope everybody's home watching. I don't know. I find this baffling. So there's one point that will lead into the other and I feel like I'm saying this for the public's point of view because I know all of you and most of you have, you know, have spoken to me lately. So, so we've been doing this contact tracing, again, not to our fault, but because this is regulations by the state and down to the, to the board of health level locally. Thank you very much for data that I asked at the end of June. As of the end of last school year, the New York, uh, New York, I read a lot about New York City education, too. The Mayopan Central School District contact traced 1,853 times last year. That could be multiple people because I know kid, children that have been, you know, contact tracing more than one's staff as well. And again, beyond our control, we have to do it. If you want to take the time, the board and the administrative staff will send you the guidelines. Yes, the guidelines have gotten a little looser, three feet, not six feet, so that's definitely helped. I can, and if anyone wants to take the time and watch last week's meeting, I understood what you said, Mr. DiCarlo, of the taxing responsibility on the administrative staff and on the building level staff, principals, and, and Mr. Tremblay and his staff to essentially become police officers and detectives to do the investigative work and report it to the DOH, who are the judge to decide whether they throw it out or contact or quarantine the kid. So this is not what our administrative staff was initially hired to do and it is all-consuming and even more so now because of the amount of transmission with the children. And it's huge. So I, I heard what you said, if anyone wants to listen, about the possibility of hiring maybe a nurse, one or two additional staff to take on some of this responsibility to alleviate the tracing role at the administrative staff. And I agree. I, I think maybe it should be done. I think we're in our third school year and if you don't see an end right now, so it's, it's tough. So I agree with that. To my point with that, and I find this, you know, really interesting and, and not to blame the school administrative staff because I think they just reported to the DOH, it's the DOH who tracked this, but my question, I wasn't able to get an answer, was what was the amount of those 1,853 times those people were quarantined last year? How many of those tested positive while they were in quarantine by the district? Now, I, we don't know because it wasn't tracked or it's not made public knowledge. And I understand last year was a different story. This is a totally different story and the transmission is higher and the kids are getting impacted more. So with that said, shouldn't we really be tracking that number to justify the contact tracing efforts? Because why do we keep doing it if it's not, if these kids and parents and whoever, even the contact tracing cases that are in quarantine, if they're, if the positivity rate in quarantine is not high, then we should advocate at the DOH level to stop it. Like, stop it because it's very destructive to the educational process for in-person learning. So that brings me to the main point of why I'm here today. And, and, and this is what's important and I agree, it's, you know, it's not impacting everybody and maybe there's people here tonight that it hasn't impacted this year. And honestly, I have four kids, it, it hasn't impacted me yet. But I want to know the process for if it does. So, you know, I have children vaccinated and I have children unvaccinated based on age. And unfortunately, the two that are unvaccinated have IEPs, so I'm very concerned about that. So right now, and I feel like I'm, you know, I'm not saying this to, to repeat it to everybody here, but just so the public is aware, and I have to say, Mr. Tremblay spent hours with me, about close to two hours in the last week, explaining things on the phone to me and I truly appreciate it and gave me his personal cell phone number. Anyone is welcome to call him with questions and I hope people do call the district and reach out to people like him and he can answer your questions. So with that said, I asked, what, what is the process to educate a kid if they are quarantined? So you get a call, your kid's been contact traced, and you got to come pick your kid up and you take your kid home. So right now, the district is using a policy that actually I didn't realize has been in place for a very long time prior to COVID. So if you have a child with a medical problem and they can't go to school, not going with, they have a severe illness and they, you know, they need to be very careful, or they've had surgery of some kind, whatever, but they're home, you're entitled to X number of hours one-to-one by the district to help educate your kid. So that, those hours are for K through fifth grader, one hour of one-to-one services by a certified district teacher to, to teach your child. Sixth grade through 12th grade, two hours a day of services one-to-one, upwards of 10 hours a week for the K through, uh, K, two hours for six through 12, and five hours a week max for K through five. So that sounds, you know what, it would be lovely to have more, but it's, it's good enough for now. So the process is, and I think Mr. DiCarlo brushed on this, and this is what's in, kind of concerning is due to union issues, which is not really issues, but it's union contact issues, the, the classroom teachers and the educators in the district have up to 48 hours write a refusal to accept that overtime to provide that one-to-one education. That's great because you know what, the first line of defense would be to have the classroom teacher teach them. But unfortunately, if they accept that overtime, those hours are outside of school hours. So you have an eight-year-old sitting at home and they're waiting for their teacher to tutor them at four, five, six o'clock at night and they're home for five, six days on quarantine. So if the teacher refuses or says no, which is their right, it goes up to the whole district to a teacher to sign up. If nobody does, then it goes to a service called ITutor, which is a national service where you can hire a virtual tutor. So there's, there's an issue there because there's quite a lapse in time for services to start. There's a possibility and it has happened and some of my children's friends have experienced it the last week or two. To give credit to the district, I don't think anyone ever knew that we would be quarantining this many kids this quickly and trying to figure this out. So, the bottom line is, my point is, we cannot control a lot of things right now. We can't control the masks, we can't control the quarantine process, but we can control at our level how we educate our kids if they're in quarantine. It's a very, it might just be a small little issue and no one really thinks about it, but think about the transmission rate. The kids keep getting quarantined. This is, this is very important. This is the third school year that's impacted our kids' education. I had a conversation with my eight-year-old daughter's special educator, she is an IEP, who, she's the only one out of the school, my daughter's in, trained to provide the Wilson Dyslexia Training Program. And I asked her, what happens if Rosie, if she gets quarantined? I asked her, her classroom teachers today called to chit-chat about something with me. They didn't know the answer to that. So that's very concerning to me. First of all, I'll figure out that one-hour service. It's not ideal if the teacher's tutoring her after hours. It should be within school hours, but who's going to provide her IEP services when they're that specific? Who at the district level can do that? If, if her special educator isn't available to do it? So that's my concern. You know, I really think it's sad. I think that the Putnam County Department of Health should have a representative here to answer questions on the quarantining process. I feel this has been a relatively quieter meeting than the last one, but I think you're sitting there as a, you know, you get shot at like, you know, sitting ducks. It's not fair. You can't control that. We understand that. And it is on us to help, you know, advocate at the county level, but it is sad that they don't come out to answer these questions, but I, I just, the quarantining process and how, how we can educate our kids. We can't control the quarantining process right now, but we can control how we provide that remote education. And that's honestly my point of my speaking here tonight.
Thank you. Well said. Thank you.
So Mrs. Trager, to your point, just when it comes to special education, that's case by case and it would be definitely, whatever they are entitled to from their IEP, they would get. As I mentioned before, we're going to be presenting to the board, Mr. Tremblay, Mr. Belu, and, and the group cabinet are working with, looking to see how we may enhance that, especially on the elementary level. So we're possibly looking at doing some work during the day specifically on ELA for, you know, a specific amount of time. Let's say that's AM and the PM doing MAM and then in the afternoon, looking at some of that. Those are some possibilities. We're looking at different options, but so we are on it. We'll be presenting to the board and like you just finished saying, nobody foresaw how quickly this was going to happen. So we have to make adjustments along the way. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, in my haste to get to the consent agenda with the, with the fine residents out here, I did want to, I did want to just, if I could, just a second, just double back. We have folks that, that received tenure this evening and tenure is a monumental, for a teacher, TA, you know, for student staff, tenure is a, is a, is an amazing accomplishment. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to acknowledge and recognize the three tenure candidates that are approved this evening, Caitlin Thuley, Krista Osborne, and Victoria Neely. I believe that Victoria is here. If there are, if all of you are here, would you please stand up? Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you.
And enjoy your stay in Mahopac Central School District. Thank you. Okay. So that was a nice little lighter moment, so a little break in the action. So let's go back into resident comments and again, Victoria, thank you and congratulations. Melody, who's next up?
Uh, Lady Monahan.
Okay. Mrs. Monahan, come on up.
First, I would like to say thank you for the opportunity to speak from you. And I'm going to stand here and I speak from my heart as I always do and I am speaking with full transparency and with my feelings. I have been told way too many times by way too many people that I care way too much. I will take that a million times over because in my eyes, there is nothing that cannot be overcome if you have a caring heart, if you have compassion, and you are transparent and honest and you have great communication. In a world coming out of a pandemic, we can all agree that everyone is on edge. The stretch and additional workload does not adhere itself to administration only. It carries itself down the line to your support staff, your nurses, your custodians, your bus drivers, your monitors, your SROs, and your clerical workers. We need to understand that simple, easy gestures can be done to make people feel safe and secure. There's no need for me to elaborate why I'm standing here, you all know. The requests that were made, although were not required, would have been the easy and compassionate thing to do, to make your staff more comfortable when they return to a building. Instead, you failed to show compassion to us. You failed to follow your own policies. My question to you is why? Why was it so important for all of you to turn the other way and not follow your policy? Why was it so hard for you to calm the fears of your staff members who are returning to work after, instead, extensive construction? Although the construction did not happen in our work area, it happened around our work area. The district office is locked up like Fort Knox due to the pandemic, yet we had an open-door policy at the high school. Construction workers and whoever wanted to walk in off the street, no accountability for any person that walked in the building, walked through the building, or walked out of the building. Was it just because it was the staff that was working there? That's how it felt, whether it was true or not, that is how it felt. I love Mahopac. I love my job. I'm just wondering why the Health and Safety Committee hasn't met as required by your policy? Why hasn't the Health and Safety Committee done the walkthrough through the high school building as required by your policy? You may have walked it, the board may have walked it, administration may have walked it. The people that worked there, though, did not have the opportunity to walk through that building. I'm going to leave you with a thought. I know you guys cannot comment, but I'm going to leave you with one last thought. To become truly great, one has to stand with people, not above them.
Thank you, Melody.
Sonia Marisculo. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address your case tonight. My name is Sonia Rivera Marisculo. I'm here on behalf of the parent organization of the Friends of Mayopan High School Drama Company. Sorry that this is not going to be as serious as other issues are, but I have to share it with you. I'm here to respectfully request your assistance in procuring the main stage for the high school production of the group. Yes, we're in a pandemic, or hopefully in an endemic. We don't know if it's going to happen or not, but it's been brought to my attention that delayed construction or not completed construction or whatever it is, the efforts that have been made to make capital improvements in the school are rendering the auditorium unavailable. Just let me say a few words about the drama company. It has existed in Mayopan since before the Setheese. All of you have been born since then, so you've been around. They have two productions a year. One is the fall production, which is drama, and the second one is the spring production, which is in music. Our community here in Mayopan goes to great lengths to support the children, whether they participate in sports, in the arts, or music. The drama company provides students who may not be athletically inclined because they're either incapable or because they're just not interested with a place to belong. That safe space includes the students of the academy. We need your help ensuring that those kids have their time, that they not be marginalized. I've been informed that the fall school has been made available for production. We did that last year. Quite frankly, it sucked. So why? Why, why do we have to use the fall school? As the chair of the parent organization, I'm asking you, Melody. As a taxpayer, I demand a response. This is a public school, not a private one. There's a certain level of accountability. I don't want to hear what I've been hearing, which is, well, the auditorium is being used as a storage facility right now. Is that a legally proved use for the space? I don't want to hear that there are conflicts in scheduling because we have content, because we have illusion, because we have this, because we have that. This club has existed since the seventies or before. This club has existed since the seventies or before. What's changed? This club gives the kids a place to belong. My daughter graduated from Mayapac High School, and she loved the drama company. It made her high school experience. She has since graduated Superfluent Lading from college, and she's a talented, sought-after writer and very proud to say that. Where did it start? It started here, on that stage. My son is a special ed kid, and he's been a member of the drama company since he's been a freshman. And he's a crew kid, and he loves it. He moves a chair, or stops a line, pours a tea, whatever he does, he's happy there. This pandemic has wrecked havoc on the lives of all the children. It's impacted all the student body. I, I don't know what to say other than to ask you, what are you prepared to do to help our children? I've spoken with other parents. There are, I have, I represent the organization, so I'm here on behalf of all of those parents who would have all been here. But I have a big enough mouth, so they're happy with me coming here and speaking. Mr. DeCarlo, I know you support the drama company. You always have. And we need your help because what I heard is unacceptable.
Yeah, so I, I will let you know I'm on it. I was actually there today. And so there's, there's, there's a lot of things that I need to do, right?
I, I heard that. I heard that there was problems with lighting. I have a rolodex full of people who graduated from this school 30 and 40 years ago who are ready to help. And just so you know, that memorial garden that stands, that's in front of the Mayapac High School, our organization did it with the help and the support of people who graduated 30, 20, 25 years ago, 15 years ago, and with their money. They didn't ask us for anything. They came in and said, I graduated from there. I'm willing to help. So if you need somebody to come in and change a light bulb, let us know. Because if you don't have people in your construction crew that can do that, let us know. As far as it being used for storage, again, I'm going to ask you, is that what that's approved, that's the approved use of that space? It's not. We'll move the boxes. Mr. DeCarlo will move the boxes. We'll change the light bulbs. We'll, we'll do what has to get done for these kids to have their opportunity to use the main stage because the fall school is just not acceptable. This is their high school. For someone that they're seniors, my son is a senior, it's important to them. Please, please do not marginalize these children. Please don't let the pandemic continue to keep us down.
So I can tell you where we're at, okay? Actually, I was there today. And, and, and your point is well taken because of the pandemic and what happened, you know, last year I am. Because of the fact of music and being able to have kids be able to play orchestra, whatever, we had to go into the auditorium because it's a big, big area. As far as the construction goes, I'll circle around because we're on the same page. We always knew with the construction, and I mentioned this when this started, not everything could be done in the course of two and a half months. It's impossible when you're doing the kind of work that was being, that is being done at the high school. So we knew the date was anticipated for the band area and the live area to be on or about November 1st, okay? Indeed, I had a conversation with, with Mr. Per, and, and we had a conversation last week because they brought this to my attention. I went to the high school today, had a meeting with Mr. Lawrence. And to your point, if we have to make some adjustments on the timing, because now I have to go back, literally just heard this today, go back and meet with our construction managers to see where we're at, is it going to be earlier than the first or later? And then how can we work around it? If we need, and I've had conversations with our assistant superintendent, Mrs. Collessi, if we need to bring our custodians in for overtime to move these things and get the, you know, the, the auditorium ready, that's what we'll have to do. So we have to bump the date because there's a date that's on right now, and we have to bump that back, getting the playback, and then bump the concerts back. That's what we're going to wind up doing. So I am on it. I'm working on it. I can promise you that. Because all the arts are important. And, and to your point, they have been down at the fall school. They were happy that they even got a place to do that last year, but they should be back there. So we're going to work on it. Not everybody's going to be happy, you know, but at the end of the day, we have to do what's best for kids. So I will definitely, if you don't mind, you can give my clerk, Ms. LaRaca, your email and everything. I will update you. I'm in the process of working on it. Not only will I update you, but I will, we're having a conversation with Mr. Per, as well as the orchestra and the band, and we will work it out. And that's, thank you for offering to come in, but we'll have to, we will, we will work together as a custodial staff to whatever we need to do to get into overtime. Once, you know, those places, as the band room is ready to go and move stuff back, we have to do that, we do that.
I appreciate that. And once again, I genuinely mean that. I, I, I'm honest with you. And I saw, I saw the construction taking place the day before, like, right, the night before school started, while I was out there putting flies out with the people that were working on that garden. Those people graduated 30 years ago, and I have a rolodex. Yes, I have a rolodex because I don't use that. I have a rolodex full of people who are willing to come in and say, we will move the boxes. We will move the instruments. We will help you because that's the kind of community that Mayapac is. But we can't do it without you. We need your help. And I'm sorry that originally you said, you know, there's a hierarchy. I'm not going to do that. I'm coming to you. I don't want to ask everybody alone. I'm sorry. That's my problem. Dr. Stone knows that. I appreciate your time for listening to me, and I'm not going to leave you alone.
How are you? I understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Per, Mel.
Per, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I just have two quick questions. So Lakeview, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, the, my kid just graduated from Lakeview. Very exciting. They're on to middle school. But the amount of time I spend up there, because I do live local, the pillars in front of the building are falling down. The rocks are literally falling off the building. The grass is going into the landscaping. It's just getting to a point of disrepair. I think if you look at all the school buildings that we have, that's probably the most congested and oldest, original school that we have. I think it's important to keep the appearance of that building as nice as it should be. So I'm just asking if that be addressed. I'm not saying that it hasn't or whatever. I'm not sure why. Maybe just nobody's going to pay attention. But I just, I think soon it's going to be a really expensive repair rather than a repair. The other thing is, is there planetarium? Is there any update on a re, or re-commission of that?
The amount of time we talk about here?
Yeah.
Now, so in the conversations for the bond work that's being done, it's going to become a mini theater? So that there could be large group construction for kids, for the community, that's in the, the works of the boards coming up?
But not what it was before.
No, no, not what it was before.
And then Melissa, is there a turf practice field being put in?
So here?
Yeah.
Okay, so what is going to wind up happening is, as you know, there's a field that's going in back here, and there will be a second one here. Another turf practice field here.
So, so we're getting two turf fields, but I'm sure more kids will go to, and this is nothing against anybody, more kids will go to space than play pro football. I think planetarium probably better use its money. I went to this school. The only thing, when I walked in this building, I walked my kids in this building, the only thing I remember is that planetarium, how amazing it was, and coming back. It taught me so much about looking at the stars and the stories that I have from, from that. I think it's really important that we relook at that because we're spending a ton of money on sports. And I just think that there's other places that we could address. The condition of the school, the condition of the buildings, it's just an awful lot of money on sports. Just my opinion. I love sports. I love that people get to do that. It's just an awful lot of money to be spending on sports when we have some of these other things that are in disrepair. We don't have people to do certain things. I just think that we need to reassess where our priorities are.
So, Mr. Melzer, a couple of things. We spent months and months looking for input when we were looking to put this bond together. And you're the first one to come up and say, hey, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, right?
Everybody I talk to is, they love planetarium. They, they don't, most people just don't know that it hasn't been used. When I came here for the first time with my kids, I realized that it wasn't being used because it was a storage locker.
It hasn't been used in decades.
Yeah, it's an amazing feature right now.
And the other thing that, when you talk about the fields, and everybody says it's sports, we, we forget about, it's physical education also. So it's our phys ed class is that we want to put on spaces that they can get out if it's at all time.
Totally agree with that.
But I think to your, right, but to your point, that doesn't mean we can't do something. It may not be planetarium in that location, but there may be some other things that we can do because to your point, you know, this is just the beginning. And I think what needs to happen is as we're looking after this bond is done, there's going to be other things that need to be done. So there may be ways to be able to create what you want to create moving forward. So, thank you.
Well, maybe down if there's planetarium discussions coming up, I'll bring a gang of people in here and I'll talk about the benefits of it. But please, if we could think about the priorities in terms of, I grew up playing on those fields. My kids grew up playing on those fields. My wife grew up playing on those fields. I have a ton of kids that played on those fields before those fields were there. All these fields, they did just fine. They don't have to be turf for my kids to play on those fields. So.
Thank you, Mr. Melzer.
Thank you for letting me give my input.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Susan Halmid. Well, I'm here to speak about the drama company. I don't know if I could be Sonia. She covered a lot of pieces that I was going to discuss. So I want to thank you, I'm thinking, DeCarlo. I know that you have been an advocate for the program. Now, what I would like to ask is, you know, as an officer in the drama for the part of the parent organization, we set up tables for fundraising, you know, just to support the club. And the sports, they get quite a big budget, you know, to support them. I would like to see the drama company, you know, set aside a budget for them. You know, other schools, they get to take, you take Normal High School, they take different trips to New York City for competitions. They take local trips to performances for the kids. You know, it's just, I don't feel that, you know, Mayapac really focuses on the arts. And I don't know if there's a budget, if they're ever, you know, if anyone speaks to having a budget allocated. I know this year, because of the pandemic, some money was given to the arts. But going forward, what's going to happen? Are we going to have a budget for these kids to be able to put their performances, to not have to fundraise for their costumes? You know, to have to ask families for money? I mean, we paid out a lot of money in school taxes. I think we need to allocate the money, you know, more evenly, you know, to support all of these programs in the school.
So to your point, when it comes to field trips or anything else, if they want, if they would like to go on a field trip, and we know where they'd like to go, I'm all for it. And I've had conversations, they should be, again, you know, Broadway's dealing with a lot of things and whatever. And I know last year they were supposed to go to the premier theater, and then that happened, and they, they lost their money because there wasn't any getting back of it. So I'm all in support of that. When it comes to whatever their needs are, two things need to happen. They need to sit down with the building principal and talk about what the needs are, and that gets then incorporated into the building budget, right? They also can talk about, we're having conversations about what we call appendix fee. And I know that President Mongan knows about it, maybe some of the board members don't, but appendix fee is a part of the teacher's contract, which talks about specific salaries for, you know, for people who are doing the drama, for people that are in the pit band and other things. And a lot of those things have, have to also be looked at too. So I think starting off with the building principal and talking about, speaking to the drama department on what they'd like to have in it, number one. Number two, they can go on field trips if they like. I'm all supportive of that. And then number three, looking at those specific stipend areas so that we can create stipends so that the kids can have a pit band player, a accompanist, and other people, which will heighten the actual performance of itself. So I do agree with you, and I think there's work to be done, and I, I hear you clearly on that. And we have to incorporate that in, and it's going to be a conversation that's had through the school's budget to be able to do that. And then once it's established, it'll be there.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Kim Kugler. Kim Kugler.
Kim?
Jack Moda.
We'll jump over to Jack. Hopefully, Kim just stepped out. Jack, jump up. Come on.
Hello, everybody. So I'm actually upset that it took so long for me to get a chance to talk. But I'm actually, it was a blessing in disguise because I can say echo a few things, if you don't mind, before. This trainer, we spoke back at the board meeting in the high school, alright? And I applaud you for being here tonight. And you're right, I'll listen to what you said. On Facebook, I have a lot of Facebook friends that are keyboard warriors, okay? A few of whom show up here. So if anyone can hear me at home, because normally we can't hear at the meetings, I hope you can hear this. The keyboard warriors, they just show up here. Because it gets tiring of the people that keep coming up here time and time and time again by themselves. Alright, the ones that are here, we'll have you back if you show up, okay? Drama, planetarium, art. I understand what they're saying. I understand what you're saying. Do you realize, again, you know I'm married to an artist, right? So you know where I stand on this. I'm a musician. You know where I stand on this. You will not have a debate about this budget ever if you mix it up. I agree. What do I need turf fields for? You know what I want that money used for? Better central air for our kids in the schools. So don't worry about these stupid things. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm not yelling, or I'm just, I'm passionate right now. You know, I'm just, I'm really feeling it. So I just wanted to touch on that, alright? I, I echo everything you guys said tonight, and I appreciate you guys talking. So I'm speaking for a friend, and I was told I could say her name. So Daniela Poljack. She had, couldn't make it tonight for reasons that she sent emails. You guys will find out about, alright? And I told her I would talk for her, and it's what I had to say. And that's why I read what she said. It actually echoes what I want to say. So I'll touch on the one thing I can talk about today is lunch. I get the protocols and the hierarchy. But Mrs. DeCarlo, I got to come to you. We had a nice conversation a few weeks ago, right? Good talk. I have to come to you because I can't go to the building principal because it's almost every building. You can't go to, I can't go to every principal if I don't have him. So I'm going to come to you. Lunch. See that water bottle? Two of my, three of my props left. That's why I'm upset I couldn't talk earlier. See that water bottle? This is how I'm going to associate it. The biggest person up there, I want you in 15 minutes to drink that entire bottle of water. Let me know how you feel afterwards. Because that's what my kids have to do every day. They have to eat and drink 15 minutes. Completely unacceptable. I challenge all of you to do it right now. Can't do it. I can't do it. And it's not fair to these kids to have 15 minutes to eat. And then, when you have 15 minutes to eat, they are told, again, multiple schools, so that's why I'm coming to you. Multiple schools, they can't turn to their friend like this because they can't breathe at them. But we can go out to eat on the weekend and they can breathe at them all day long. I understand you're following protocols, but when does it end? We need to take a stand together. The advocacy committees, they're working for that. So something else that Daniela was concerned about is quarantine and contact tracing, which is a school's job, not the DOH. I still can't comprehend why she can't. So I'm going to echo things that she says. I, I still can't fathom why this is your job. This should be their job. I know there's been situations with contact tracing, and they were contract traced by the school district. And they got a call from the county two days later, sorry, your kid shouldn't have got contact traced. They can go back to school. So maybe it's time for the school district to push back on the Department of Health and say, this is your job. Department of Health, Mayapac Central School District. You teach, they deal with health. The mayor should be optional, okay? I know you follow the protocols, but let me ask you, 1,853, thank you for that figure, 1,853 people. I'll say, children, or was it just children? Staff and children were quarantined last year, correct? What good do these do? Everyone was wearing masks last year, yes? They're useless. We have to stop fulfilling the, the fear of germs into our kids, that they can't talk to each other or play with each other. Someone put a picture up on Facebook today, the last good year of school that children had. My sixth grader, her last year, good year of school was third grade. My sixth grader, her last year, good year of school, was third grade. Third grade. And you heard from me, it was fifth grade, and we got that resolved. Third grade. Think about that. Mike's first grader, she, her last good one was what, pre-K? And nine, pre-K four, pre-K three, pre-K four got shortened. And COVID is so bad still, because so many more people are being infected. Why do we have three kids in a seat? I understand the bus shortage, but three kids in a seat? But COVID is bad? It's almost like we talk at both sides of our map, right? You can't, you have to have three feet of distance between, but you fit three kids in a bus together? Think about what we're doing. Think about it. We need to stand up together. You said it. We need to work together, right? We're here, we're here for you, be here for us, like we talked about last year. At some point, we need to stand up and say enough is enough. So thank you for the time. I appreciate it. And the email that I sent out, thank you to those that got back to me. Did anyone have a chance to listen to last week's meeting?
Yeah, it was in and out.
So I, so one last question. I'm sorry, because I didn't hear the answer last week, because I couldn't hear anything. What happened to that federal money? Money that we never had, that we got and now is spent? Just wondering. And you don't have to answer me right now. I didn't expect an email response back, but we got federal money, but it's spent already. So I don't understand how that's possible. I couldn't hear the meeting last week, so I couldn't get an answer on that. Money that we never had is already spent.
Some of it, so some of it has gone towards staffing, that we had, you know, we put people in staffing that we didn't necessarily have at the beginning of the year. Some of it is put on other areas in which we're looking at. For example, as talked about before, Mrs. Trader, looking at hiring people to come in and help us with the administration for the contact tracing. And we have buckets of it. We have Esther money and Chris her money. So most of it is, as I'm saying to you, now we have to spend upwards of, and this is why I go back to your point, Mr. Mott with the Senator, because when I speak to him about contact tracing, they think that the state does it all, and they're not. That's why I said to you, they're being misinformed also. Now you look at the testing, okay? And again, required, testing employees and then screening of students, but we're not there yet. It could be costing us literally maybe $5,000 to $6,000 a week, times, every week, times a year. That's what I'm saying to the Senator. The money that you've given us, they think it's, that's the answer, right? Just, that's like the go-to thing. There's only a certain amount of money that's available, right? So that's, I think, why we're seeing it continue to go and go and go, because of all these regulations that are coming down. You know, we only have X amount of dollars that we can do, and we can do it. That's why we're looking at that, those monies. You know, and that's the, that's the part of the quandary to your point. And you mentioned it, and I go back. We are becoming a hospitalist. Like, we're not educators, we're hospitalists. We're, you know, and we're just touching that piece of it, right? Salivat tests, and who collects them, who tracks them, and who has to ship them now? And who's got to say now, who's in the pool that's positive? Now the positive person's got to quarantine, which means now you might not have a teacher, because, I mean, so, and I go back to what I said before, and you and I did have a conversation over summer. But I'm one superintendent, right? And, but your voices are far more important than mine are, because you know, and you and I had this conversation. Everybody's up next year. Everybody is up next year. So when January 1st starts, and they go and they start all these conversations, the accountability piece is, let's see how you're voting on it. What are you actually doing? What are you not doing? So, because I'm not disagreeing with any of you. It's unsustainable. It's unsustainable. And notice what I said before. I used the word endemic, right? I said, to me, it's the endemic. And to your point, we've had this conversation with the DOH. We're asking, and like I'm saying, can the state provide us with the information? Like, you have all this information, your contact tracers. How many of the people, since we've started the pandemic, have actually gotten it from somebody else in the schools? And they look at me, Mr. Mott, like I have 10 heads, just like I said three or four months ago. What's the cutoff that says we can go back to masks optional? And I looked at like I have 10 heads. So I'm trying my hardest, right? Because I get it. I understand your frustration, right? And again, I'm being told this, it's 90 days. That's what, quote-unquote, turf is for right now. But we can't wait for the 80th day or the 89th day. It's got to happen now. Because that's how, at least, we can say, okay, give me the numbers for Maya Pack. What's the zip codes? Give me the zip code numbers. Here's how many kids we've quarantined. Has there been any other further? Again, I can't answer that. Part of it is, when you have an endemic, so let's say somebody in, Mr. DeCarlo's class, tested positive, right? You send a note out, and you say to the parents, "Listen, there was somebody positive. Make sure you monitor your son or daughter. If they get any of these symptoms alike, then you go to the doctor, and then everybody's in. We're not..." But that's not where they're at now. I don't know what more we can do to try to get them to look at that data. And I will tell you that I think there's more of a want, believe it or not, and this is across the counties, not just Ploton, to actually do that, because that'll help everybody out. It isn't really working or not. And I think that's what people are starting to get to. But if the public starts to put that pressure on, maybe they'll gain some momentum.
So I again say, to the keyboard warriors, get out here and fight. We need everybody's help on this, right?
And I will get back to you, and we'll have a follow-up with my team about the lunches, and we'll see what we can do, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it. That's it, that's all, yeah.
Okay. So that's going to be it for this evening. It is 20 minutes after me, and I thank everybody out there that came here today. And Jack, going to say hi to the keyboard, to the keyboard warriors, okay? Thank you for all that you do for our community. Thank you for your concerns and being here this evening.